And welcome to the Montgomery County Formal Commission Meeting for June the seventh. The invocation will be led by Commissioner Sankey, and then I will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Good morning, teach you again. Let us pray. There's a verse in the Book of Psalms that reads, "Before the mountains were brought forth, O even thou hast formed the earth and the world; even from everlasting to everlasting thou art God; for a thousand years in thy sight, but as yesterday when it is past, and as a watch in the night." Father, we thank you so much for this day, for the opportunity to come before you. We ask Lord God your mercy upon Chairman Elton Dean's family. We thank you, Lord God, for the life and time of our Chairman Elton Dean, and for all that he contributed to this commission and to each of us individually. We ask that you would help us to redeem the time, Lord God, for we all know that our days are numbered. And we also ask that you would just be with us this day as we mourn the loss of our chairman. We ask that you would be with us as we have these discussions, Lord God, in terms of what is best for the people that we represent. Be with us, Lord God, in each and every way and every day, and help us to be more like you. We thank you now just for the opportunity to serve and just to come before you to express our thanksgiving to what you're doing in our lives. So have mercy upon each of us this day, and it's my prayer that I ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call roll now. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
Commissioner Sankey.
Present.
Chairman Singleton.
Present.
We have quorum.
Am I signing on? Where is it? Am I signing on?
Is that a check for all of us?
Okay. Public comments, we have two. Ms. Rankin's from West Side Restoration. Ms. Rankin's here. Come on up to the mic, Ms. Rankin. She's actually speaking to the mic, so people listening on the internet can listen here. And we ask everybody, out of respect for everybody's time, try to hold it to three minutes if you could. Thank you.
Well, good morning again. To our county commissioners here today. And we also offer our condolences to the Dean family. I had the privilege of teaching his children, so that's a blessing. And also our director's, Classy Thomas, could not be here today because she got a call this morning. She lost her brother-in-law, so she had to go to Bremen here. So I'm speaking on her behalf. I present to you, West Side Restoration is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that provides an opportunity for our children ages four through seventeen. In addition to educational assistance, we provide a very structured program for our children. As a matter of fact, I brought some of my children with me this morning. And so we provide a means of enhancing engagement and exposure to our students around the city of Montgomery. Our reading readiness program under the leadership of West Side Restoration distributes a leading atmosphere, a very learning and wellness atmosphere with music, reading, science, math, to improve the cognitive abilities of our children. Every child deserves an opportunity that will mentally and physically mold them into professional, sociable young men and women. But we cannot do it alone, so we're asking for your assistance. We need your help in this fight. This year, we plan a rigorous calendar of education events that require funding for at least $6,000. This amount will help us with food, transportation, educational supplies, and exposure. Any assistance you can give us would be very helpful in this, you know, with our program. And like I said, we constantly encourage our children to go out in the city, and our social skills are so important. And they are also engaged in a lot of things that are happening around the city that we have a lot of questions. So we try constantly to prepare them to how to engage in altercations, think before they act. It's constantly that way. West Side Restoration is developed in making a difference in the lives of our children and our community. Lastly, I also want to thank you in advance for your time and your willingness to invest in our children and in their future. If there's any questions, you know, you can call us. I think Ms. Patrice Peterson, probably 11:30 last night, Commissioner Singleton, you probably got an email from Patrice Peterson. She's our activity director, you know. And like I said, we try to expose them to as many things possible that we can within June 6th through July 29th.
Just a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
What, how many, how many kids are you having in your program right now currently?
Right now, we have sixty-three children.
Sixty-three? Where are you located?
We are, right now, we're located in the west side of town. We're housed in First Baptist Church, Great Washington Park. That's where we're housed.
Okay. Who's the pastor now that Reverend?
I...
Willie Welch.
Yeah, Reverend Welch's gone. Who's the pastor now?
Now, we have Reverend Leon Hampton. It's the pastor of First Baptist Church, Great Washington Park.
Okay. You, you have a budget and all the things that's needed to?
Yes, so we have a budget. As a matter of fact, I can have Ms. Patrice to email you all our budget. I didn't bring our budget with us, but...
Could you get, get her a list of the things that we need in order to consider them for funding? Florence?
Yes.
We'll take a look, we'll take a look at it. I'd like to come out and visit y'all. How long you last?
We start, we'll be July 29th. We have an activity at June the 24th, the last of the week. We're taking them on a field trip. And, but you can come. And on the fourth Sunday in July, all our children are in charge of our program. They, they have the morning service worship, and they do from one thing to the other.
Look, I love, I love the little girls, but where the little boys?
That's what I wanted to know, Commissioner.
Well, we do have little boys, but as we, they were doing devotion when I left, and these girls just happen to be in my classroom, and we don't discriminate, so we do have little boys too. Okay.
They'll wake up early, though. They'll wake up early, don't they?
Well, they were on the side as I was leaving out, and as a matter of fact, they were conducting the devotion when I left, so they were in my classroom near to me, so I said, "My golden girls, come on, go with me." So they just followed me.
Little girls do what you tell them to do. Them boys hard is.
I know, sir. In our program, they have, they don't have a choice. You know, the little boys have to do.
Okay.
You know, they do follow the rules.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Callie Willis and Bishop Crawford connecting Life Center.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On behalf of my uncle, his wife, my aunt, has actually had surgery, and he was supposed to be here, and he sort of threw me under the bus this morning. I guess something happened, but I'm glad to be here. And on the passing of Dean, Elton Dean, Commissioner Dean, my heart goes out to his family and his children. Well, I'm here, I think Commissioner Singleton's in all the county commissioners on my proposal. I'm actually planning on bringing along with Bishop Crawford a play here to Montgomery. It's called Silent Scream. It's dealing with anxiety, depression, and suicide. I wanted to come today so you all can see the person that wrote that play. I wrote that play about two years ago. I've done a lot of production. Every play I write, it comes from the Lord, Jesus Christ himself. But with this play, I was, I did stage plays. I ran the one-point million-dollar business. I put two kids through college as a single mother. What caused me to have mental illness? What caused that breakdown with me? It was just life. It just happened. I dealt with anxiety, depression. It was so bad with depression, I just would cry for no reason. What's going on with Callie? Callie don't know. I didn't know. And I'm embarrassed to go and get help. I'm embarrassed because of what we've been taught. You go to your pastors, and you just pray your way through. But where I was in this dark place, I couldn't pray my way through. I was losing my mother. She was present from bone cancer, and she was dying. And that was the thing that pushed me over the edge. I think Deputy Cunningham, he know me. I did a lot of stuff in Raymond with the youth, always doing stuff. Always been a server all my life, from a child, I've been a server. But I was at a point where I couldn't help myself. And this play is actually going to open up the conversation to suicide, suffering in silence, silent screams. And bringing this play to Montgomery, it's going to open up a lot of discussion, and it's going to let people know it's okay not to be okay. And I talked to some of the city and some of the city councilmen. They had a suggestion that if the county paid for one night and the city paid for one night, that we can have a two-night program. Representative Thad McCallum, daughter Penny, which Thad was one of my greatest supporters, she agreed to pay for all the advertisement, so it would be out there. Only thing, I'm just asking, you know, if you all would just help bring this show to Montgomery for one night.
She asked for ten thousand, I guess, per night.
Mm-hmm. And it's a full production with the band, backup singers. Pretty much put it on a Tyler Perry level. We actually closed the 50th Bridge Crossing Ceremony in Selma. I got a lot of school teacher, police officer. It's very professional. It's nothing that Montgomery ever seen. Some of you all know me. I wrote Don't Count Me Out, Too Blessed to Be Stressed, and Sugar Shack from the house to the crack house and back. And I also wrote a book called Grandma's Community Center.
I forwarded this to all the commissioners on May 17th, and I just re-forwarded it again. It has your budget, as I requested. The budget's in there. And Callie, you've done some great work. I've witnessed your work before for the back-to-school and stuff, programs you're doing. And so we will take this into consideration, and I'll let you know something as soon as I get back with them. They let me know if something, so.
How soon do you need, how soon do you need?
I was looking at July the 30th, or the first week of August. But I actually put that flyer on social, on social media, and you guys will be surprised of how many people reached out and said they were suffering in silence and they needed help.
It's very important. We know mental health is a major issue all over this country. And so anything that, you know, we can do to help raise the awareness and maybe eliminate some of the stigma, so that people can start to talk about it. I'm all for that. It probably would've been nice you had brought two or three of your cast members to give us just maybe a sneak preview.
But I actually heard your testimony on last, the county commissioner, I was actually watching from work, and you was talking about the young man that I think that you knew that committed suicide, and you didn't even know that he had a problem. And that's the way it operate. You don't know. I mean, I was perfect. My weight been up, it been down. I put on my makeup, go to work. Nobody know anything was wrong. Come back home and cry myself to sleep at night. That's how it worked. And once we start talking about it and bringing awareness to it, you know, maybe that can start to help the community. I think about that little boy that was only, I think, maybe in the elementary school, but he was a dancer. And some of you all maybe remember that. He was a dancer, and he killed himself because he was being bullied, and that pushed him into depression. And I also want to do a play later on for the school kids, so that we can also address that, what's happening in the school system. But I know one thing that my God told me that was going to be no charge, and it was going to be free to the public, and I'm standing on that belief here today.
Amen.
Thank you, Callie, for coming in. Appreciate it. And Bishop Crawford. Hi, Florence.
Next, we'll have a public hearing regarding the transfer of a license, ABC license, from Mercer Enterprises to Hope Hall 2022.
Declare public hearing open. Does anybody here to speak on this matter? Declare public hearing closed.
Next, we'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting on May 17th, 2022.
Move for approval.
Second.
Well, I don't see why.
It's coming up now. Any objection?
They're ready.
So ordered.
Excuse me, Ms. Chan. Oh, okay, thank you.
Consider the accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move for approval.
Second. Any objection? So ordered.
Consider the transfer of alcohol beverage control licensed business from Mercer Enterprises to Hope Hall 2022.
So moved.
Second. Any objection? So ordered.
Consider the appointment of Montgomery County Commissioner Daniel Harris Jr. to the 2022 ACCA Legislative Committee.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered. Who's second? All right, okay, now we got, we're good.
Who's trying to catch up here?
Yeah, to catch up. This is, okay.
Still back on transfer of alcohol and beverage?
Commission's faster than the computer is, so that's what it is. It's just holding up, waiting for us to vote. There we go.
Isaiah, you moved that, and I seconded.
Okay.
All right, we're good. Consider amendment number two to a contract with Bonded Filter Services, doing business as BFC Solutions to provide air filters and service.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies.
Move for approval. Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education with the addition of $5,000 appropriation from each Commissioner Harris and Chairman Singleton to Lamp for its baseball program.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with the removal of $10,000 from the joint infrastructure money for Liberty Learning Foundation.
Move for approval. Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a bid award to Alabama Telephone LLC for high-speed data network to extend from Annex One to the youth facility.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a final pay application to Stallings and Sons for the Perry Street parking deck restoration.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider changing the pay range of Assistant Director of Elections from pay grade A07 to A09 for the probate judge's office, the election center.
Move for approval. Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change request number four for personnel.
Move for approval. Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change request number one for pre-trial diversion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change request number seven for the probate judge's office for the election center.
Move for approval. Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change request number five for the sheriff's office.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider position fill requests for the District Attorney's Office for a retired RSA employee, a grand jury coordinator, and a legal support assistant.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider position fill requests for the detention facility for corrections, for six corrections officer trainees.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for information systems for an administrative assistant.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider position fill requests for the sheriff's office for a deputy sheriff corporal and a part-time deputy sheriff.
Move for approval. Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the probate judge's office for a customer service clerk.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the youth facility court for an administrative support associate and a juvenile probation officer.
Move for approval. Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider position fill requests for the youth detention facility for a juvenile detention officer and a cook.
Move for approval. Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Yes, sir.
Consider travel training requests for appraisal, detention, pre-trial, sheriff's office, and the youth detention facility.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered. That's it.
That's, that's all of our items.
Mr. Attorney?
No, thank you.
Deputy Administrator Kendall Anderson?
For our ERA two, we have dispersed $6,46,135. We have assisted 1,139 persons. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, the eight million that came from the state of Alabama?
Yes, sir.
The Treasury has released the guidelines and approved of that transfer?
Yes, sir.
When did you say that money would be available? Because we're still having people calling to me, calling to you, back and forth. They don't know what to do. They're being threatened with eviction. Is that money really available? And, and can we really, really assure the people that that money was intended to assist that they will probably be getting some help in the not-too-distant future?
So persons with that eight million dollars, that money has been approved. We're still working to get it to Horn, so they can get it and start processing the applications. Current applicants, as you say, if they're calling you, they have an application in the system. They can call yourself. If you forward those to me, I can look it up, find out exactly what's going on, get any further clarification from our customer service peoples, and figure out, maybe they're missing an app, maybe they're missing something, or maybe there's something that needs to be clarified. Maybe there's something that the landlord has not done. When I get that information, I will call that person, inform them of such, so we can, we want to move these people on. We, we want everybody to get paid as quickly as possible. If they are facing eviction, they can call Legal Services of Alabama. Legal Services of Alabama has the ability to stall the eviction until those funds can be received from, from Horn through ERA program to make them whole, make the landlord whole. So yes, sir, we're working. It, it is, it is, I know it's a lot for the people that are trying to go through this program, and I know we have a lot of community partners that are helping, and so we just encourage everybody to keep working, keep helping. And anything that we can do here, myself, more than happy to do it to make sure that everybody gets what they need to get.
So the money, is it in our account? Is it with Cheryl at this time? Yes, ma'am.
We did an application for the eight million approximately a month and a half ago and sent it. The portal didn't work. They knew the portal didn't work, so we were told to email the application. We did. It was updated. I had a contact at the Treasury. We've gotten an email that we're approved for the eight million, but because the portal now works, you have to re-put everything in the portal and redo estimates of how much you're going to spend every month as if you have the money as of June 1st. So we don't have the eight million yet through no fault of our own, and hopefully we'll have it soon.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes, I'd just like to express my sincere condolences to Chairman Dean's family and frenzy. This commission mourns and the entire county of Montgomery should mourn the death of this individual who devoted a substantial portion of his life to the betterment of the citizens of Montgomery County. As I stated earlier, you know, one of the things that make us the envy, the envy of the country, really, when we go to these National Association of County Commissions meetings, and, and we tell people about the cooperation that we enjoy between the city, the county, the chamber, and the state in our, in our efforts to do economic development and to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Montgomery County, they envy us. It's rare to have that type of working relationship, and I can tell you that Chairman Dean, in no small part, was responsible for forging that relationship and keeping that relationship alive. And it is my hope, and I'm going to do everything that I can in my position to ensure that that type of cooperation, the type of cooperation that he inspired and he forged, continues between the city and the county. He was a friend of mine. I've known Elton since childhood, and he would've probably never wanted me to say this while he was still around, but Elton actually is the reason why I'm sitting here today. He approached me about this position and asked me if I would... He approached me about this position and asked me if I would, uh, run for this office and, and he helped me. So, you know, he, he played that role. I, I could never tell that if he was still sitting here. He's probably wherever he is and getting in trouble for saying a bad thing, bad words in front of her. But anyway, you know, we, we're going to miss him. We miss him. We all loved him. Uh, uh, and, uh, peace and comfort to the family.
Yesterday, my, my daughter asked if she could come to the county commission meeting with me. Uh, and this morning, after learning the news, uh, that, uh, Chairman Dean had died, she thought maybe it wasn't the, the best meeting for her to attend. But I think the little bright ray of sunshine was just what we all needed. But my thirteen-year-old daughter, Margaret Walker, uh, is out of school for the summer and here getting a little civics lesson. It's been quite a few years. She used to be a regular, her and her brother. Uh, over the next few days and weeks, there will no doubt be a lot of, uh, stories and memories shared. Uh, a lot of conversations about, uh, the dynamic that, that Elton Dean brought to the county commission. Uh, but I just want to share my favorite funny story, if that's okay. Um, when I first joined the county commission, I was new to local government. And mostly, uh, you know, an, an unknown commodity, uh, at the city and county level. Uh, and as y'all have learned over the years, I, I have a tendency to run my mouth. Uh, and I came in to the county commission a little hot, uh, and ran my mouth a lot, starting on day one. I showed up and I sat around that table in there and I asked a lot of questions and I ran my mouth and I made a lot of comments. And, uh, I'm never one to be shy. It was genuinely more of me being inquisitive. Uh, but it certainly came across as bossy and know-it-all. So one day, after being on the commission and running my mouth for probably three months, uh, Chairman Dean pulled me aside and privately, and he said, Rhonda, he said, when I first got on to the Montgomery County Commission, I was told, uh, kind of be quiet and listen and learn. Nobody told you that, did they? Uh, and he, you know, it, 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 his advice was very well taken. And the thing, but the thing about it is, he came to me with love and respect. He wasn't being bossy or haldy or, or trying to put me in my place. He came to me out of a genuine love and respect and said, I want to hear your opinion. I want to hear your thoughts. Uh, but, you know, th- there's a finesse about it, right? You can't come in like a wrecking ball. Uh, you got to have a little finesse. And, and that day, his, his point was very well taken. Uh, but we always had a very good relationship. Uh, and he will be, um, uh, dearly missed. Um, and he was very, very loved by many. Thank you.
Uh, yes, I guess I still need to work on my finesse.
We all do at times.
But in any event, uh, I, I have a story about Chairman Dean as well. Um, first of all, my condolences to, to the family and, uh, uh, my thoughts and prayers with the family. I was doing a lot of work in the community, trying to operate a small business and so forth. I was pretty close to his pastor, Reverend, uh, Claude Schufert. And just doing some things in the community, you know, trying to justify my existence. And, uh, he said, boy, we need to run you for office. That's what Elton, uh, Chairman Dean said. He said, Sankey, we need to run you for office. And I don't know if he was serious or not, but I took him at his word and so I started campaigning. And, uh, so because of that comment that he made, I find myself here today. And so I, again, I'm sure as all, as everyone else has expressed, uh, he's going to be missed. And so again, uh, we thank God for the life and time of Chairman Elton Dean.
I'm, uh, I don't want to sit up here and bow and cry, but, uh, I do want to say that, uh, I want to thank the family for allowing me to be around Elton as, as much as, as I've been the last five or six months. He's been in the hospital or in rehabilitation. Uh, I got to spend a lot, a lot, a lot of time with him. Elton and I were very close. Uh, been very close for many years through Duke's youth baseball and softball. See, Elton called me Great White Hope. I called him Black Magic. Not many people can do that in society today. The reason we could do it is because we love each other. I remember he told me one time that Bill Joseph, who passed away about two weeks ago and was chairman for thirty years of the county commission. Bill Joseph took Elton by his face and said, listen to me. I love you. Now, it's easy for us today to end a conversation on the phone with love you. And everybody does that. But Elton loved me in my face. And we did that every time we were together. Probably over the past three or four years. Many times, I had my opinion about things and I knew I was right. I knew I had the best answer. Elton said, hold on, hold on, my white brother. And I would argue with him because I knew I was right. He just, hold on, my white brother. Let me tell you what you need to do. Thank the Lord I was wise enough to do it because every time he did that, he was right. He was surrounded by his family and friends, family, excuse me, family this morning when he passed away peacefully in, in his sleep. And, you know, I struggled this morning coming to the, uh, from the hospital to hear to the meeting, whether or not I had two or three calls, are you going to cancel the meeting? I think we all know Elton's answer to that would have been, are you crazy? No, you're going to have this meeting. And I think it was good for us to be here today to celebrate together, mourn together, and let Elton know how much we truly love you. As you can tell, we don't always agree. We're all very passionate. We're all very compassionate for our districts and our people and representing our people. But Commissioner Harris mentioned that state, local, city, we all work together, but we work together too. We don't always agree. But like Commissioner Harris said today, we work together, we resolve issues, and we move on. And that's what Elton taught me. I think he taught all of us that. I love him. Thank y'all for being here today. I need a motion to recess to executive session. Is that right, Florence? Is that right procedure?
So moved. I make a motion that we recess to executive session.
Aye, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're going, recess to exec- executive session, then we're going to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, go ahead and, will somebody go ahead and second, just to get out of the computer part?
Hey, Dan, somebody wanted to see you.